We'll do the discussion, most of you already are here for it. But we'll start tonight with the Seating Road hearing for 25 Wilson Dale Street.
Hi guys, my name is Paul Seibert. We have our 25 Wilson Dale Seating Road application. What we actually would like to do is basically relocate their existing driveway. Put it to the right-hand side here. Currently, the driveway exits down to a low point and she can't quite see past, basically right here, basically only sight distance going this way. And this goes up over a hill over here, so she can only see to the crest of the hill this way. So basically what she'd like to do is basically just take out about a 16-foot section of stone wall here. She's gonna use those stones to replace the stone wall on this side. And she'll also need to remove, there's like a 28-inch diameter tree right here that she'll need to remove. It's the one that's in the right-of-way itself. But that'll really improve the sight distance in each direction. It'll maybe help her. Straight out of a big public safety concern, so it'll be an improvement.
Great, thanks. And we saw this a little bit because there was a separate A&R that we looked at in order for the lot line to accommodate the location of the driveway. So we sort of had a head start on the issue. And we have pictures that have been submitted. Has everybody, everyone seen those?
Yes.
And I think we had, we have something from the chief on the site lines.
We do, and if I just read an excerpt.
Sure.
He visited the site and he says, "The proposed relocation of the driveway greatly enhances the sightline. It moves the opening away from a dangerous corner. It also makes it a bit safer for oncoming traffic, vehicular, and bike. From a purely safety standpoint, I encourage the board to act favorably on the request without knowing that the Seating Road constraints are."
So what those constraints are? Are the disturbance to the wall that's there, the existing stone wall? And then the tree that you mentioned that's in the right-of-way? The tree on the pictures you can clearly see would have to be removed, right? For visibility. Decent-sized tree and it's sort of right out of the roadway in the right, the wrong place.
Right.
And I know there's been discussion about using the stones that are removed from the location where the driveway would be placed to close the location of the existing driveway, the existing stone.
Come on, just answer the reading.
I did, without even asking. No, yeah, does anyone mind if we do not read the legal notice of the Seating Road here? You sure? We got it, we can read it.
Tell them seven thirty.
So were there any other questions, anyone have? Is the board on this one?
Nope.
No? Any objections to mine? So is there a motion to approve the application shown on the plan to relocate the driveway using the stones in the existing, I'm sorry, from the proposed location to fill in the opening of the existing location? And supplementing that if needed with stones from a portion of the wall inland that would also need to be removed?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thanks, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
And can we wait on the A&R meeting?
We could, Mark is here.
Oh, you're here on the A&R, okay. So that's next on the agenda, so fair enough.
Fair enough.
Let's do the A&R as well. So A&R for four-stage coach thing?
Yeah.
Do you want, do you want to come on up, Mark? It's here on the table.
Okay. So when we first developed or came into the planning board to develop the Kirby property, there was the Kirby homestead, which consisted of about three acres. And there was a covenant under a restriction on it for, that it couldn't be redeveloped or subdivided for five years. And we are close to the five-year mark. I was in front of the board several months ago. And the Kirbys had wished to get the process only sooner than later. And so all the county departments have looked at it. GLM has carved out a one-acre block in the back. And so that's about it.
Yeah, so we talked about this when you came in before for the informal discussion of the call. Actually, we're not that much earlier than the timing, whatever it was.
I know.
Right? Given the time it's been done this time. But appreciate you coming in last night. So it makes it seem straightforward. Do you know, you've looked at the plans, anything?
Yes, straightforward, it was anticipated as part of the subdivision approval five years ago. And it meets all the requirements. How we recommend it also.
Can everyone appear and wants to see him there on the computer or on the table? Are there any questions, Tom? So is there a motion to endorse the A&R?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks.
Is there a period of time that we have to wait for?
No, there's no, there's no appeal period of time. Once they sign it, you can take the mile on and record it tomorrow.
So you're headed out, right? As opposed to sticking around? We'll sign off, you're headed out.
Do you want to?
We'll get tomorrow, whatever.
Okay, that's more invasive people.
Okay, thanks, thank you. Thanks.
Hey, Mark? Mark? Mark?
Oh, oh, Mark, you're telling me. So yeah, so on to the discussion of open space residential development. Want to welcome you all, thank you all for coming. It's great to have this discussion jointly. And thanks to Stephanie, I'm gonna hand off just the start of this discussion to Carol.
Hi, Carol Chirico. Just want to let everyone know that this meeting is the starting point of a joint conversation about whether Dover should consider amending our zoning bylaw to include an open space residential development option, which would allow some flexibility in the design of new subdivisions. It's the continuation of an ongoing dialogue that started in the Long Range Planning Committee last year when the selectmen were asked that group to consider the issue of housing in Dover, a broad mandate on a potentially abstract and complicated topic. After discussing various aspects of housing, including affordability, types of housing, the pace of development, and its impact on town services, resource and character, the Long Range Planning Committee identified local zoning as an area where the town could consider taking some specific steps that could have a tangible impact on the future of development in Dover. So they formally asked the planning board to consider whether open space residential development zoning might benefit the town. This type of zoning, sometimes called open space zoning, conservation zoning, or natural resource protection zoning, is not new. Consistent with the goals of the state's smart growth planning principles, more than two-thirds of the cities and towns in Massachusetts already have this zoning option in place, some for many, many years. Mass Audubon has long been at the forefront of this type of zoning. So the planning board thought it would be best to kick off this conversation with the benefit of their expertise and experience on this topic. We are fortunate to have Stephanie Cavino from Mass Audubon to join us tonight and provide us with some background and context. Stephanie is the project manager for Mass Audubon, shaping the future of your community program, which provides workshops, advice, and technical assistance for Massachusetts residents, municipal officials, and businesses to guide sustainable development. Chief facilitates conversations and manages partnerships between stakeholder groups with a focus on making connections between various topics, including regulatory requirements. Stephanie's training is in anthropology and environmental science and policy, and she has a wealth of experience on zoning issues throughout the state. We really appreciate you coming out, Stephanie, to speak with us tonight and kickstart this conversation.
Yeah, thank you for having me. And this is not the first time I've been here. We've talked about this, so I'm really excited to come back. It's the type of issue that, you know, it's not kind of like a one-and-done. We just solve it all in one meeting, right? Wouldn't that be nice? But it's definitely a long process. So again, I'm happy to be back and to follow up on previous conversations that we had. So thanks, guys. So as Carol mentioned, my name is Stephanie Cavino. If you have clarifying questions as I go, feel free to raise your hand. But definitely we'll have some Q&amp;A at the end as well. Actually, gonna see if I can move this here without being, nope, in the way, so that I can actually change my slide without actually being able to look at all of you guys. So a quick agenda of what we're gonna be talking about. It's kind of a broad topic. I want to be able to set the stage and think about climate change and how our Commonwealth is changing already, how land use is affecting that. Talk about nature-based solutions. This idea of you get what you zone for, and what do we want to zone for, and what we want our community to look like. Conservation design and open space residential design. How to design examples of what it looks like, cost-saving opportunities. Do a quick summary, and then we'll have time for a Q&amp;A. Is this a map that looks familiar to anybody? Have folks seen this before? Great, you have some data on Mass Audubon land use supporters in here. So we saw in the last edition of Losing Ground, published in 2014, that our land use is changing, and that is often due to sprawling development. So we found that around especially the 495 corridor, that kind of crosshatched area, our development is sprawling out of our cities and into our more suburban and rural communities. So what does that mean? Well, as we take up more impervious surfaces, we are trading a lot more stormwater runoff from those surfaces, and we are seeing dry rivers if the water isn't getting back to where that original hydrology is. We're also seeing flooding if we're redirecting water somewhere new, again, not having that original natural hydrology. And we're also seeing as that water runs off, it's taking a lot of pollution into our waterways. So we see algae blooms, beach closures, et cetera. So this is certainly a problem for our communities. And just sort of to summarize this in a different way, we have these kind of two ideas of this impervious surfaces, surfaces where water isn't able to drain through sidewalks, rooftops, parking lots, et cetera. And then we also have these large lawns. So it was the thought for a really long time that the way to be sustainable is, well, we need more open space, so we'll just have these really big, you know, three, five-acre lots. And there you go, now we have open space. But that thought has transitioned now that we realize it's actually better to have smaller lots and have natural conservation land around it instead of having these very large lawns. Because that's what a large lot would often end up as, is a large lawn. And when you have these large lawns, we're taking in a lot of water to water them, right? And you put nutrients and fertilizers on those lawns that run off. So what communities end up with is infrastructure impacts from all this extra water runoff, and then also water quality problems. And then we have financial burdens, we have regulatory burdens, how to need our stormwater permitting, MS4 permit, Water Management Act permit, et cetera. And then we add on top of this the idea that our climate is already changing. These are just observed changes in Massachusetts. Climate change is not something that we see as, well, in a hundred years, our grandchildren will have to deal with this. But in our lifetimes, our temperature, well, you know, and maybe not our lifetime for that first one. Not mine anyway. So our temperatures have risen almost three degrees since 1895. Our growing season is about 11 days longer, meaning our winters are about 11 days shorter. Our sea levels have risen, as measured in Boston Harbor, nearly a foot already. And our strong storms are getting much stronger. So that once-in-a-hundred-year storm, or 1% chance of that storm happening any given year, that storm is giving us 55% more water than it used to. And what are we expecting in the future? But precipitation is gonna simply increase. Extreme precipitation will increase. So instead of getting a little bit of rain here and there, we have nothing, 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 nothing. And then this massive amount of rainfall that our systems are not capable of handling. So what we have written in a lot of our regulations is thinking about how do we build our infrastructure to very old standards, which we really need to be able to think about how to build our infrastructure to new standards. Does anyone know the answer to this question of why rising temperatures also bring more precipitation?
I think it's fairly obvious. The issue is that as you have warmer temperatures in the oceans, there's more opportunity for evaporation. And that's essentially what we saw in Houston.
Right, so when you have warmer temperatures, that warmer air holds more water. So if you think about your hot cup of coffee next to a cold window, if that's a kind of lukewarm coffee, it's not really gonna be producing that much evaporation that can then condense on the window and come down on the window as strange, right? But if it's a really hot coffee, then there's a lot. So this warmer air can hold more water, so it holds more, and then all of a sudden comes down. So when we think about, I'm gonna turn this, I can't look, don't look at the presentation. It's gonna show you how much more precipitation overall are we getting? Well, it's about 15% overall increase in Massachusetts, but that's, if we wanna visualize that in a different way, 1.2 trillion gallons of water every year in Massachusetts. Still, really, what does that mean, right? Okay, well, does anyone wanna guess how many Prudential Towers in Boston that can fill? 1.2 trillion gallons of water? Who's really good at math? Throw out the number.
Twelve.
Way higher.
Jerry, you got this.
I don't remember.
What's the square foot? What's the square foot?
I don't know what the cubic, cubic, here in the buildings.
There you go.
It's a, 200?
It's much higher.
9,700, and that's more. More. So that's nearly 10,000 Prudential Towers of water on top of how much water we used to get every year in Massachusetts, right? It's a lot of water that we suddenly have to deal with. So water's only one aspect of what I'm talking about tonight, but it's definitely a big one.
15% more, since when?
I can give you that. Changes are calculated from a linear regression of annual totals from 1895 to 2015. And then the reference period is 1901 to 2000. So it looked at data all over, but it looked at the last.
One other thing that's missing from this is particularly from NWS Nor, not Norway.
Ton.
Thank you. Did you look at my graph?
No, no, I just knew your head.
The data there clearly shows a increasing frequency in extremes to either direction, both in temperature and precipitation.
Oh, absolutely.
That's part of the criticality of this.
Yes. And part of it too is that we still retain our risk of cold snaps, yet we have this lack of snow, because most of our precipitation in the future will be coming as rain and sun. And so there's actually a greater risk of subsurface freezing for infrastructure. So there's another element just to throw on there. So we're gonna be bloom and doom for another like two minutes here, guys. I promise we'll transition. So just to summarize, we have climate change, we have increased precipitation, more stormwater, water quality issues, flooding, infrastructure damage, doom and gloom. We have increased temperatures. Maybe that leads to more heat-related illnesses, more tick-borne diseases. And then you add in sprawling development. Don't forget about this land use pattern that we started out with. So we're creating a lot more impervious surfaces. That's increasing our temperatures, and it's also driving this increased stormwater. So we're just really exacerbating the challenges that we're facing from climate change with poorly managed land, right? So doom and gloom over, okay, wasn't even two minutes. So this transition is, there are real things that we can do. I'm gonna talk some pretty big picture and some very, very specific. But the biggest opportunity we have as a Commonwealth is to preserve our natural spaces. These natural spaces offer us a whole host of benefits, which I'll run through. But it's really our first line of defense. So does anyone know the term "nature-based solutions"? Not really so much. How about the term "green infrastructure"? Low-impact development?
That's what you see in the Massachusetts Water Resource Commission literature that we work with.
So everyone's transitioning right now to use the term "nature-based solutions". That's coming from a report that the Nature Conservancy did. They've been working with the state, and so now the Commonwealth, and particularly the EEA, Energy and Environmental Affairs, is trying to use this term "nature-based solutions". So what we've worked together as a partnership through a number of different collaborative organizations to define this as is, these nature-based solutions use natural systems, mimic natural processes, or work in tandem with traditional, more gray infrastructure approaches to address natural hazards like flooding, erosion, drought, and heat island. So we see green infrastructure as kind of this first-line-of-defense, these natural solutions, our uplands, our waterways, our wetlands, et cetera. Keep what you already have. And then under that, there's this subset of low-impact development, or LID, which we define as more of these engineering-type solutions of bioswales, et cetera.
Could you just keep track of that slide number, because I'd like to come back to it?
Sure. It's 13, you're gonna remember that one? So our forests are good for a number of different reasons. One is that they mitigate climate change. So mitigating is, let's make climate change not as bad. Adapting is, let's deal with the changes that we know are coming. So our forest sequester about 14% of our gross annual carbon emissions currently. The average acre stores about 85 tons of carbon. And as we allow that forest to mature, that capacity increases over time. They also provide a lot of different ecosystems.
Sorry, 14% of the carbon that's produced in Massachusetts? 14% of what carbon?
In Massachusetts. The state's carbon emissions.
Carbon dioxide.
Rare emissions?
Yes. Yeah, so 14% of what we're putting out are getting back, yeah. Good question. They also provide a whole host of ecosystem services, so free services that we get just simply for those ecosystems existing, including shade, wind block, reduce erosion, soaking up, and filtering water, as well as carbon storage. And when we put a financial number on that, our forest sequester, forests provide, excuse me, about $3.8 billion annually in free services. So I'm gonna be referencing money a lot in this, because that usually talks.
Do you have any information on the health of our forests? Giving the gelledards and the beetles and so forth and so on. There was, this is another risk factor because our forests are decreasing in Massachusetts? Or is it maintaining?
We are doing a good job conserving forests. We're actually working currently, have a meeting today, on the next edition of our Losing Ground, which will be published in 2019. So then we'll have a better idea of how our land has been doing in the past five years or so. Climate change is certainly a threat to our forests, and our forests are changing due to this change in precipitation and temperature. So we have our, I recommend two resources for that. One is, it was published by Harvard Forest, U.S. Amherst, and it's called... I forget what it's called. I actually have a copy in my car. But it's about changing forests in an uncertain future, or something like that. And another is our State of the Birds, which focuses on climate change and how our habitats are changing.
Stephanie, how large does a parcel of land need to be considered a forest?
It doesn't.
So it could be somebody's backyard? If it's heavily forested?
Yeah, so usually when we do, I believe, this is out of my realm of knowledge, I think, a little bit, but I believe when we look at landsat data, and we're doing a GIS of, you know, what's forested versus what's not, whatever that parcel is, if it's over 50% forested, I believe, it's counted as forest, and it's looked at on the parcel level.
Jennifer, can you talk about towns that have perhaps outlawed or regulated tree cutting? We have several developers in Dover who just cut down virtually every tree in the lawn.
Yes, I can.
And I'd love to know the names, et cetera.
Can I come back to that?
Yes.
Can I ask you one last question? If you have it right there, do you know what the cost per ton is that you use to get the 3.8 billion?
So that's not just carbon.
Oh, okay.
That's ecosystem services more broadly.
Never mind, keep going.
And I can get you the data for that. So getting into more zoning now, we, so, all right. We talked about land use, we talked about conservation, we said a little bit about why it's important. We'll get more into that in a minute. But the goal is to preserve those benefits that we're already getting, right? So introducing climate-smart zoning and regulations, things like open space residential design, is really the goal. So number one, again, I've said this before, I'll say it again, protect our natural resources in open space. We also want to promote efficient, compact development patterns and infill, smart designs that reduce overall imperviousness, adopt green infrastructure stormwater management provisions, or LID provisions, and then encourage efficient parking. So these are the five ways that we broke up our bylaw review tools. So that's over on the right. We've done this for the town of Dover, actually, and analyzed, how did you fare? What could you improve upon? And we can talk more about some specifics of that later. But one element of that is, how is your open space residential design bylaw? And you guys got a zero on that one, because you don't have one. But that's what we're gonna talk about. Again, first step here. So conserving these natural features, communities often do this very unintentionally. You made a great point, and tree cutting is one way of doing that. But communities will often require large lots. They'll require strict dimensional requirements, not allowing for flexibility depending on what that landscape existing is. Prohibiting curb cuts for drainage, which, again, it takes that stormwater runoff and puts it into our stormwater system instead of putting it back into the ground. I've actually seen communities require invasive species, because they just haven't updated their regulations in a really long time. Often, low-impact development is entirely ignored, not, just not encouraged, but when you talk about stormwater, it just immediately goes into, this is the size pipe you need, and this is how you're gonna do it, and this is how you tie in. And then the last one, I think, is really important, of not prioritizing preservation of natural features. So that's really what we wanna be able to get to. And there are a lot of specifics in that tool. So getting back to some of these numbers. The Transfer Public Land did a study in 2014 that looked at every $1 invested in land conservation offered a $4 return on investment in terms of the number of other ecosystem services, including reducing flooding, improving public health and air quality, improving water quality, as well as helping manage water quantity, recreational opportunities, quality of life. When you think about a place like beautiful Dover, it's nice to live here, right? And one of the elements of why you like to live here is probably because it's forested. I know when I looked for a house, I looked for a place with mature vegetation and beautiful tree cover, and it provides shade in my neighborhood, and it just makes it feel established and nice. And because of all those reasons, it also increases property values. So studies have shown that open space residential design and healthy, mature trees can actually add 10 to 30% on local property values. So, not to say that development isn't important and that we need to offer housing. So when we're balancing these two things, there's a way to do that. And it's open space residential design, or natural resource protection zoning, or conservation design, or a number of other things that people call it. I'm gonna usually call it OSRD. And what we're looking to do is to cluster homes together, but also to preserve natural open space. So here are some elements of conservation design or OSRD. Again, cluster development that considers what that natural landscape is. It identifies and builds away from critical resources, including those of historic significance or beautiful views. It permanently protects about 50% or more of the natural open space. It depends on the community, what we recommend is over 50%. And, excuse me, it offers a classic New England village-style character. Because if we think about how our old communities were built, you had your village green, and then you had your homes around it. It was this natural open space with everyone kind of sharing that open space, and that's sort of what this gets back to. So I'm gonna give you a lot of visuals of what this looks like. In thinking about the perfect audience here, who actually understands this kind of thing. You don't always get that. Your conventional plan, this is just one theoretical example, but how would you divide this parcel? You have this way, your conventional plan of just like, all right, here's all of the available space. Let's chop it up and put a house in each lot. Or maybe we wanna think about how we can preserve the character, the natural heritage of this community, the working farmland that might be there, the views that we might have, the water that's running through, dilute away from that, and make it look like this. I'm gonna give you more visuals as well.
Well, before you leave that.
Sure.
The alternative that you have up there. Is there a tendency for marketability, or bluntly profitability of the developer to leave some number of one or multiple-acre lots?
So don't have all quarter-acre lots have one that's one acre, is that what you're saying?
Well, you have up here, specifically on that loop of the road, these are individual house lots, they're apparently one-acre lots in the conventional development, typical that you would see. And that, of course, reduces dramatically the opportunity for open space, even though you've created 68%. I'm just curious if there's a tendency to do this for, and for what reason?
So we're gonna look at a number of different examples, and they're each gonna be different sizes. And they're each gonna be different sizes, different reasonings, different locations. We're gonna look at one that is built in downtown in Rhode Island. And I believe it's a one-acre, half-an-acre lot with numerous homes on it. So it's very, very small, but it was built to be affordable housing. And it's just a different way of looking at that. This one is a theoretical example that was not actually built. This is from a book by Randall Arrendt. We are gonna look at some other ones that have very small lots that were specifically built so that every single lot had a beautiful view. And that was the goal. So the number of lots and the sizes of the lots are, and this is sort of the goal, is let's be a little bit more flexible. Let's think about the parcel and build for that parcel instead of saying, I want 12 lots, and they're all gonna look like this, and they're all gonna have this dimension, right?
But looking at the feasibility of this, in this specific example, the one-acre lots are traditional, and therefore the ownership presumably goes with the one acre to the resident. Now, does the remaining open space belong to the condominium that is the 16th unit?
So that's another option, is this is up to the community of how you decide to deed that open space. It could be managed and owned by that local group. It's better to be owned and managed by your conservation commission or a local land trust. Or if it's agricultural land, you know, an agricultural organization. It's pretty site-specific and parcel-specific. That's kind of the theme here. And again, we're not really looking to, one question that I'll head it off with a pass, I know you're gonna ask, is, well, what about septic systems? And what about drinking water? That's one reason why you might need either shared supplies, or you might need larger lots. And, you know, it's all flexible. It's, again, let's look at what the goal is here. And the goal is to preserve as much land as we can for these existing benefits that we're getting from it. So even if we don't get 100% there of what we originally wanted, we're moving in the right direction, right?
Stephanie?
Yes?
Before you move off this slide, so it's an interesting example too, because the conventional zoning in this example allows 38 units.
Right.
Under the OSRD, there are more units that are allowed. And so, do you see, is it currently, what's the current state of the art thinking about density bonuses and all that under open space design?
Yeah, that's a good question. And so, again, looking at different examples, this one, the open space design has more lots. There's another open space design that has fewer lots. So it depends on the community, how you want to figure that out. Some communities, what they do is they figure out what's the traditional amount of lots that they would have on that lot, on that area. And then, as you said, they have a density bonus. So if a developer uses OSRD and does a number of other community benefits, then they get an extra house or two or three. It's not an enormous amount.
But is there a clear trend, one way or the other, do most of the cities and towns that have this type of zoning have features that allow density bonuses? Or would it be allowing only the same amount of development? That could be done under conventional zoning, but you're just allowed dimensional relief to do it differently?
We encourage density bonuses. I don't necessarily know if most communities have gotten there yet. But every time we look at communities by laws and regulations, we say that you should have density bonuses. And that's actually one of the easier things to change. And that makes a really big difference, is to encourage developers to do this. And as we'll see, it's also cost savings, not only for the community, but also for the developer.
Well, Stephanie, when the last time...
I'm so engaged.
This came up at a town meeting, was, got a majority vote, and a two-thirds vote. One of the opposition opponents referenced the fact that he thought that cluster zoning dwellings sold for a lot less than houses on one-acre properties. My question is, do you actually have studies in various towns like the Dover without public water and sewer that give you an idea of the payback from a marketing point of view, at least on the revenue side, if not the expense side of what you're looking at here?
It's a great question, and there definitely need to be more studies done. We have studies from other states right now. Colorado has done open space residential design quite a bit. And so we see that homes typically sell for more money, and they sell faster when they are following this kind of open space residential design with smaller lots and access to open space. A local example that's not the same as Dover, but that we'll talk about in a minute, is the Pine Hills in Plymouth. So even during the recession, when most housing completely stopped, most development completely stopped, for the most part, they were still selling homes above market price. Because the thing is, is that open space residential design offers a different type of housing. If you want your two-acre lot, you can find it anywhere, right? But if you want something a little bit different, with less maintenance as a homeowner, I'll tell you, I'm a terrible landscaper. Like, I hate mowing my lawn. I would rather pay someone to do it. It's not hard to do, but it's just, I don't know. It's not my thing. So I'd rather have that smaller lot, but I live right in the back of conservation land. So I can access that. I don't have to do anything for it. I can just enjoy it. If you want something like that, it's harder to find. And as we get a younger generation that's looking for alternative home designs, and as we get an older generation that maybe doesn't wanna keep up with all of the maintenance of a really large home and large lot, this is becoming more and more attractive to a number of different demographics.
Dover seems to me like a relatively mature community. And we've got a 40-unit-plus-or-minus subdivision up there. We're not dealing with those. What we're getting mostly is multimillion-dollar houses on fairly large lots. And the people who want those, and the developers who build those, aren't likely to be interested in that kind of cluster development. So how does Dover's situation fit into what might work better or be easier to sell, whatever, in a community that has lots more developable land?
Did you say that your developers are interested in doing this, or not interested in doing this?
Well, so far, they've just been building these multimillion-dollar houses.
I think male and female.
Or 40Bs. Or 40Bs, basically.
Just to clarify, because we're over here, or healthy, we're actually in discussion with one situation, I'm not familiar with in Charlotte. Where the owner is looking at the difficulty of maximizing the utility of the property if it is single-family homes because of the difficulties of getting in wells and septic. And it would seem that a, I hate to use the word, but cluster development could offer that developer an opportunity to meet his objectives better than individual house lots.
So we'll get to some of the developer benefits in just a minute. But I agree that there are incentives for developers to do this type of development. And it doesn't have to be a 40 lot. You know, it could be three.
But how do you make this, what you're suggesting is the way to go, appeal to the people who wanna buy multimillion-dollar homes? Because if they're, you know, 10 feet from the house, that's not a 30.
So we'll talk about some of those. One way, and we'll get to this, is preserving natural features. So we're not necessarily saying 10 feet. It's, again, looking at what that landscape already is. But Pine Hills has homes in every range. They have a home of, what is that crazy house that has a view of Province Town? I mean, it's billions of dollars.
Does Pine Hills pay restricted?
No.
It's not?
And they have a lot of different types of homes. And I'm not necessarily advocating for everyone being Pine Hills, and they're not perfect, but they have some really interesting features, as examples.
Well, can I just say one thing as a former commercial banker? One of the things, I think, is a mindset, the same gentleman who was against the cluster zoning, as I call it, the last time, couldn't imagine anyone paying $1 million for a unit at the Meadows, which is a 40B project here in Dover. And yet, that's what the market rates go to. And yet, the median here is somewhere in Charlie Creek. And if I'm wrong, what, about 1.2 or something like that for a one acre? So it's a per-square-foot, much higher, you know, price for a smaller home, essentially. And I think that's something, it's a marketing issue. And I agree with you, demographically, at least speaking for the 25% of us who are over the age of 60 in Dover, that a lot of people would like to stand over, but they don't necessarily want the three acres that we have to mow, for instance. So that's one thing. But you, and the second thing is the huge McMansions, they may eventually sell at the three or four million point price, but they don't, they stay on the market an awful long time. Whereas the ones that are priced, you know, much cheaper, exactly. So if I'm a developer, I'm thinking of the interest carry, assuming that that's an issue. Obviously, I'm thinking about the infrastructure costs, et cetera, et cetera.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll get to some of those in the chapter box. So I'm gonna run through this, because we kind of already said...
You're gonna have to get to your next slide.
Yeah. We kind of already said some of this. But we look at how many traditional lots are allowed usually. We can add in density bonuses. You don't have to do it this way, but that's usually what we're doing. One thing to note here is that when we're calculating that number of lots, we're taking, we're not just looking at if we have the whole parcel. We're taking out all the unbuildable places. And when we're considering our open space, percentage of open space, same thing. You're not protecting all the wetlands and be like, oh, well, I'm at 50% because I protected all my wetlands.
Yeah.
That's considered unbuildable. Our steep slopes, our wetlands, we take those out, and then we preserve 50%. So we look at significant cultural, natural, historic features. This could be a rock wall. This could be the, you know, that giant oak tree that all the kids always play on. It could be whatever you guys think is very important. And say, that's an asset in our community, and I don't want you to develop it. I want you to keep that there. So avoid those. Concentrate development away, either similar amount of lots, more lots, whatever it is. And then permanently protect at least half of that land for whatever use makes sense, whether it's agriculture, forested, et cetera. So looking at that as an example here, this is gonna be the same parcel. Again, this is from Randall Arrendt. It's an example.
How do you spell Randall's last name?
R-A-R-E-N-D-T.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So looking at, so this says, we have a flood plain, we have a pretty view, we have fields, woods, archaeological site, endangered species, hydro soils, view, wetlands. So this just is an example. So it has a little bit of everything in here. But it says, all right, what are the important places? Let's put the houses away from those places, and think about beautiful views. That's really a benefit. Again, wise, they often sell faster and for more money. We look at those roads away from, where the houses are, away from these features. And also thinking about multi-modal, so not just cars. But also, it's been found that putting in pedestrian walkways that are not necessarily parallel to the roadways, but often can be more efficient to kind of cut through little areas, can provide recreation, as well as sort of an interesting place where people will want to come and visit, and encourages people to walk as well. And then you have your lot lines at the end. So this is what you could end up as instead of something like this. So they're very different.
Is there, is there any count on the number of lots built in these two?
This is fewer lots. This open space residential design is fewer lots with this example. I mean, I could've drawn it a thousand different ways, but that's how Randall Arrendt, of course. So like I said, some have more, some have less. It depends on how you write your regulations and what you're asking for.
Of course, if you go back there, that particular example has some rather interesting frontage sizes.
So just to think about OSRD on a really large scale, if everyone in Massachusetts had open space residential design, and that's the way we built, Harvard Forest did a couple of land use scenarios in 2014, said if we continue to follow our existing growth patterns, not using OSRD, what would Massachusetts look like in 2060? In terms of how much impervious cover we have, how much water runoff we have, and how much phosphorus we have in our waterways? So what we're seeing are big dots. So there's a big increase from 2014 to 2060, and dark colors, which means there's a lot, either imperviousness, water runoff, or phosphorus. But if we did things differently, if we used open space residential design, if we valued our forests as the infrastructure and the benefits that they provide us, what would Massachusetts look like? Well, we'd have a lot less runoff in the middle. We'd have a lot less impervious cover, and we'd have a lot cleaner waterways. One thing I will note is that this is still pretty dark and big dots. And that's because it's accounting for climate change, that extra water that we are receiving, that we will continue receiving. And so that water runoff is definitely an important feature to keep in mind.
Does this take into account the already-as-built situation? Or, I mean, the density that you see there may well be attributable to as-built.
So are you talking about what's already existing?
Correct.
No, this is just moving forward from 2014 to 2060. Yeah. So two-thirds of this development, not even all, but two-thirds of this development is cluster development, and that's what we would achieve. So it's just to show you an example of, these local land use decisions have very large impacts on our Commonwealth-wide scale. So we talked about low-impact development, specifically, it kind of focuses on this stormwater feature. I wanna show you just a couple of examples of what this looks like in practice. This is Pine Hills. I've mentioned it before. It's our little poster child at times. It's about 3,000 acres. 2,000 of that is protected. Now, some of that is in active recreation. So it depends on, you know, what you call, it'll never be developed, but it is a golf course kind of thing. But we have a third of the property that has a variety of different homes. They have townhomes, single-family condos, et cetera. They sell for more than most market rates. They are really interesting because they were very careful and used the slopes to their advantage. So this is one oddity that you have to be very careful of, to say, yes, the traditional is do not build on slopes. We don't wanna encourage erosion and, you know, water runoff, et cetera. But if you're careful about how you build on a slope, sometimes you can use that to your advantage to site homes above one another, preserve that vegetation in between on all sides, and have these gorgeous views, and everyone can have this gorgeous view. We do tours there sometimes to kind of see what it looks like. It's pretty interesting. Sometimes you'll go around a little cul-de-sac, and you'll say, well, how many homes did you see there? Oh, I think there were like six homes. No, there were 12 homes there. You just didn't really notice them because they preserved the mature vegetation. They didn't come in and clear and grade the whole thing. They only cleared where they were gonna put that house. And so when you walk in, it doesn't look like it was built five years ago. It looks like it's been there for 30 years.
Just to clarify again, this community is served by one of the two public water supply companies in Plymouth? It's not, I mean, that's how they...
Is that a question?
That's a question. Are the, is this area served by either of the two public water supply companies in Plymouth?
I don't know the answer to that question.
But it's not private will or community will?
So you'll have to give that.
I don't know the answer to that. I don't wanna misspeak, so I will look it up.
And is it public sewer?
Same thing. I think that they might have their own infrastructure.
I believe they have their own infrastructure.
They do, okay. I believe that, yeah.
How many households are there?
Oh.
Or potentially?
Thousands.
Narrow and potential.
Thousands. I don't know how many.
Thousands of.
Yeah. I can find out that number for you. I haven't.
One other thing I noticed was a comment about narrow roadways, but sufficiently wide so as not to preclude public safety, public safety vehicles.
So their roadways are about 20 feet wide. Public safety vehicles can get through. And they have pedestrian access, which they very much encourage our residents to use. And that, again, is sometimes parallel to the roadway, and sometimes will cut through, and it'll be more of a worse path. But they're careful to maintain that infrastructure and to always plow it.
Who owns the 2,000 acres or controls it that is undeveloped?
Gosh, you guys have good questions.
Well, the next one, you can get back to the playing board on that.
It might be the conservation commission. I'll check.
So it's not an undivided ownership amongst homeowners?
No.
No, no.
Some of its three beautiful golf courses.
I did mention that. I did mention that, for all. So kind of some images of what does it look like? These can be a variety of different homes. Sometimes you have things like shared dragways. Those are three homes on one driveway. You have cottage-style homes. You have narrow roadways that really encourage everyone to drive very slowly. They encourage people to walk. They have, they have great soils. They have very sandy soils, and so they can manage all the water on site. This is the roadway. It runs off, goes over these pavers, and goes not even into a pipe that goes to a waterway somewhere, but it just, or into a bioswale, just immediately goes into that waterway. So it just filters itself and then will go straight into that park. So another example is cottages on Green. I know it's Rhode Island, but it's just a different example. So these are 1,000-foot cottages. It's 0.85 acres into 15 mixed affordable and market rate homes. They're very close together, as you can see. There's communal space in between. Everyone knows everybody. Everyone has a porch. Everyone walks around. There are little bridges that go over bioswales that manage all the stormwater on site. It was definitely a heavily engineered project, but looks quite beautiful. They also looked at all of their cost savings, words they've written, said, well, what if they had used kind of traditional stormwater management versus what they actually did in low-impact development? And it turns out that they saved about 17%.
It's interesting because that's one of the first examples I've seen where someone's actually looked to using permeable pavement.
So they do use permeable pavement in part of it. Yep. The parking stalls are permeable pavement, whereas the drive in between is not. And you can, I don't have a photo in this presentation, but I do have photos of what that looks like. Sorry it's taking so long. I'm going to speed it up here. So lots of benefits of low-impact development, using natural features. There are a number of different practices that we can encourage from permeable pavement to bio retention, to green roofs, to tree planting. All of these are, again, either mimicking or are natural processes. One that I like to highlight is street trees or tree planting because it hits pretty much every box going across. It's low-tech, it's easy, and it just kind of points to the fact that conserving our natural environments are pretty important.
On water harvesting, are they using, oh.
Cisterns and rain barrels.
Cisterns around the houses collecting the downspout.
Yep. So rain barrels or cisterns are pretty much just big rain barrels.
Well, except that the cisterns are not in sight of the low ground and don't need-
Well, they can be either. They can be above ground too, depending on-
Well, but on the other side of this, if they're not complete, if they're only hemispheres, they're feeding back into the groundwater automatically.
So it depends on the system that you're creating. You can have things that just store, that you kind of use a tap from, and then there are other things that can slowly feed back depending on how you set it up. But the point is using stormwater as a resource rather than a base product. So thinking about low-impact development, green infrastructure, I've said this a million times, the first thing is to conserve. The second thing is kind of incorporating into new development, which is what open space residential design would let you be able to do. And then restoring more urban landscapes with redevelopment, which isn't necessarily our issue here. So when we're looking at conserving, say that this is another example of a parcel that we started out with, and as a planning board, I'll ask you, what would you think about and what would you look at in this parcel? If you, I'm a developer, I want to come in and I'm asking you, I'm that odd developer that says, I want to develop here, but I'm going to ask your opinion first about what would you like to see in your community? How would you like me to develop this? Or how would you not like me to develop this? So do you want to point out some features?
Water.
Water.
Yeah, where's the topology here? What are the low points?
Probably around the water. This is a farm, this little block here. This is farmland.
What's the, they're large chunks. What's the top? Is that a mountain or a-
Yeah, it's like some-
Ridge.
That's just-
On the scope.
Some large forest land back there.
This is ag.
That's ag.
Cultural land.
All right. Planning board, I changed my mind. You didn't tell me what to do. And I said, this is what I propose. What do you think?
Yuck.
Carol doesn't like it. Anyone else? Mark says go for it. No? All right. So I built near the water.
They don't get the option, right? I mean, zoning allows it.
Yeah, I mean, this is what we'd be stuck with right now.
Right. Yep. And you have to say, ah, shucks. But what if I was, what if you wrote your regulations where you could encourage this? And I was a developer and I came in and said, all right, I see that you have open space residential design. I see that you want to preserve your community character and keep this beautiful farm and keep the views behind it. You want to keep your intact forest land for the habitat that it provides. You want to not build near that waterway because that's an important recreational area for your community. So I clustered my homes. I built less infrastructure, fewer roadways for you to maintain, and I have these homes which, you know, range in size and style, but I kept this, it seems so small, but I kept this intact, mature vegetation between those homes. So even though I'm relatively close to my neighbor, it doesn't feel that way. We might see each other when we walk a lot, but I have my own views. I'm not worried about my neighbor seeing in my parking window. Right? So again, thinking about our wetlands bylaw here, thinking about open space residential design, small lots, narrow roadways, less for you to maintain, preserving existing natural vegetation. If we were to integrate this into new development, you might want to think about allowing curb cuts for bio retention, narrower roadways, or even a curbless design, minimizing site disturbance. That was one I keep mentioning about Pine Hells, preservation of natural treats. And then in restoration projects in more urban areas, curb cuts and bioswales, underground utilities, tree box filters between the sidewalk and the roadway. But you can see here that there's a theme, right? So no matter how we end up doing it on one particular project, we're all getting to the same goal of preserving natural features, right? That's the theme. So in terms of the developers, say you have a 20-unit development with two acre lots, that's 40 acres that you're going to come in, they're going to clear and grade that whole thing. If you have open space residential design and you are going to save half of that land, maybe you only spend a couple hundred thousand dollars, which is still a lot of money. But you save a lot of money in not having to clear and grade all that land. Obviously, this number varies widely depending on the geography and the site conditions, but asking a lot of different developers, that's kind of an average number that I've found. So the more land you save, the more money that developers are saving. And then as for the communities, if we think about just, for example, narrowing roadways, you have a two-mile stretch of road by four feet per lane, or a four-mile stretch of road by two feet per lane, or eight-mile stretch of road by one foot per lane, all in front of that, right? You can save a half a million dollars just on building it, right? And then savings on repairing it, salting it, plowing it. And if you're not building, think about that example again. If you're not building that big windy roadway they have to maintain, you're just building a smaller one, then you're saving a ton of money right there, too.
Also, depending upon the topology, you may be eliminating problems with groundwater runoff.
Great point. So a couple of quick examples. Charles River Natural Valley Storage Area, in 1972, they said, gee, there's going to be a lot of development here. Maybe we need to think about protecting our water supply. They protected over 8,000 acres. They spent $8.3 million, which is a pretty penny, but they've gotten, I've actually checked this number, if you consider how much it is per year and go to 2018, it's over $12 million that they've gotten just in flood protection alone. And they've also gotten recreation opportunities, habitat, and cleaner air and cleaner water, just in flooding storage alone, $12 million. So they more than made their money back. Opportunities, benefits. Another one is the Mass Water Resources Authority. Similarly, they said, okay, well, we need to protect our water supply that serves 2.5 million people. So they spent $130 million protecting 22,000 acres of watershed land, and they avoided a ratepayer cost of about $250 million on a filtration plant because the natural landscape is doing that job for them, of filtering that water, and didn't have to spend $4 million a year in operation of that wastewater treatment plant. Two quick studies. Science reports found that in Hurricane Sandy, wetlands specifically reduced direct flooding damages and infrastructure damages by $625 million. They estimate that in New England, wetlands reduce or swarm damage by about 16%. That's even more in inland communities as well. Another is that the trust for, actually, I should do this one. Trust for Public Land, $4 back on your return on that investment, right? You got it twice. Getting back to bylaws again, you said, you mentioned in the introduction that a lot of communities have done this a long time ago. It's not a new thing. Westford adopted a conservation subdivision bylaw in 1978. They're very unique because they say that instead of just preferring one or the other, every developer comes in and does a preliminary plan. Isn't that nice? They don't come in with a fully fleshed plan and say, this is what I want to do, and any changes that you have is going to be really expensive for me to fix. They give you two preliminary plans. One is your conservation plan and one is your typical conventional plan. And as the planning board, you get to say which one you want them to move forward with and to create a permanent or a fully developed plan. So through this, you imagine that they'd often choose the conservation plans, and they've had over, probably over 50 developments now, protect over 1,700 acres of land just through this open space residential design. But again, thinking about, they have all these benefits from that land. Habitat, water resources, hiking and recreation, and the town didn't buy it. The developer buys the land, they develop half of it, they give half of it to the Concom or the plan, or the, bless you, the-
Land trust.
Land trust. Gosh. They work for a land trust, and she knows this term, to land trust, whatever it is, and they get all the benefits from it. So open space residential design gives environmental benefits. You have social benefits, recreational opportunities, forested rural character, maintain your look of an established community by keeping that forested area. And then you have economic benefits. Your developers spend less money, your homes sell faster, they get, they go for more money, you spend less on road maintenance, you receive all of this open space and all of these benefits for free. So I said a lot of stuff, and if you forget everything I said, that's totally fine. Gino has graciously let me borrow my own copy of these. So these are fact sheets on low-impact development, open space residential design. So it's all right here specifically. You want to look at number two, which looks at community growth and character. You will see some familiar information in here from the slides. And you also want to look at number four, which talks about planning documents, thinking about what your bylaws can do for you, et cetera. Or you can go online, masslawon.org/livefact sheets. So I mentioned we did this for Dover, and we can, I can also share what we looked at for the other zoning subdivisions, regs, et cetera. One way to get funding, because everyone likes funding. Have you been through the MVP program?
Well, the Board of Health has started looking at that.
You should continue looking at that.
But we need its support of the Board of Selectmen.
Yes, you will. So the MVP program is municipal vulnerability preparedness program. It's grants from the state to look at how is climate change going to affect our community and what can we do moving forward? You create a list of prioritized action items. If you have an action item of, I want to develop an OSRD bylaw because I think it'll help us preserve community character, open space, and that'll help us be more resilient to climate change, right? You can then apply for, if you go through MVP, you become designated MVP, then you can apply for an action grant. Those action grants are only available to MVP-designated communities. You also-
Certified.
Yep, designated, certified, yep. And then you also get improved standing at a number of other state grants, including park and land grants. So MVP communities that appear within the top one-third or two-thirds of projects get an extra however many points on their grant application.
How does it rate the income of town in general? Does it take that into effect?
No. As a matter of fact, just as an example, just recently, a small community that isn't as well-off as us called Sherborne just received $75,000 for an initial piece of effort.
So there's a planning grant, and there's a planning grant, and you go through, you hire someone that's been certified?
Yes, I know. You have that open space, updated open space and recreation plan, do you, for the-
Excuse me?
No. Okay. You don't. Ours is fairly old, 2,000 acres.
If you decided that that was a priority, you could apply for that. If you decided that your priority was to, you know, put all your utilities underground, great, you can apply for a grant for that. If your priority was to put a generator capacity, additional generator capacity at your police station or your sheltering locations, you can apply for that. It's an extremely diverse pot of funding that's supposed to be for implementation to help communities be more resilient in the ways that you need it. So I would highly encourage you to look at this process. There's $75 million that's been allocated just through this MVP grant. I'm happy to talk to you more about it, and I worked with the state as a trainer with this program.
And that was just this past year's project?
Yes, moving forward, we have some time. Yep.
It's a continuing funding.
Yes, and it will be continuing, yep. So again, what does this have to do with what I'm talking about? Right in page one of that action grant, the RFP, on the front page, it says, projects that propose nature-based solutions for strategies that rely on green infrastructure or conservation and enhancement of natural systems to improve community resilience will receive higher scores. If you adopt and think about all of these nature-based solutions and all the different things I've talked about, you're going to get better points on your state funding, and that's definitely a trend that's moving forward. So it's better to get on the boat now. So after all of that, gosh, I don't even want to look at how long that, you guys were very patient, very patient. I'm happy to take other-
Could I correct one number you used?
Oh, man.
Was it page 13, Jess, one?
Slide 13.
Slide 13, excuse me.
When you said some 2 million individuals were supported by Quab in one and what uses, that's the-
I said 2.5, yeah.
That's the current number.
4.5 about, all right.
Which just goes to-
Okay. I'm okay with this change because it was in my favor, right?
Which goes to the point of the dramatically increased density in eastern Massachusetts.
And that doesn't include Worcester, right? Because Worcester's not served by Quab.
No, they're not. There are actually very few communities west of 495, and strangely, none of the communities that surround the reservoirs.
Yeah.
Stephanie, but, oh, I'm sorry. I actually work with various towns. How do you, how do you find the best practices for towns to actually move ahead and actually get the MVP designations? How do you find the different silos within town organizations work best with this form?
So MVP is interesting because it does require interdisciplinary and interdepartmental cooperation. When you apply for MVP designation and receive that grant, the first action item for a community is to create what's called a core team. That core team is from, you know, something five to seven municipal or volunteer officials that manage the process. So they decide who should be invited to these stakeholder engagement workshops, when are they going to be held, who you're going to hire as your certified provider to do the facilitation and training with you. So that core team really should be made up of a diverse group. It shouldn't be six planning board members. It should be planning, emergency management, fire and safety, police, public health, water, conservation, et cetera.
I mean, Gino is well aware of this. I mean, we've talked about it. And just to make clear to those who are here, you don't just walk into it. You'll spend upwards of a year in the qualification process, maybe less, but in concert with it, engaging a certified planner consultant like MAPC.
So the process, you have to wait until there's an opening, an RFP. You apply, and that's usually a very quick turnaround. So I would very much encourage you, if you're interested in the MVP process, look at last year's application. There are only seven questions. Write a draft of what you've done and how you came to those questions.
We missed this past year's April.
Yep, and then when it's ready, you can put it in because you only get a few weeks usually. So the money does come around quite quickly, though. And then at that point, when you receive the funding, you have a year to spend it. So you could do it all in two months if you wanted to.
This year, we were minding the webpage where this is all disclosed, and they were two weeks later this year than last, but kept to the same end date, and it was just impossible.
So they apologized for that quick turnaround. It was just the availability and the budget of having money that they needed to use.
Stephanie, can we sort of get back to thinking about the zoning bylaws? And what do you, do you give guidance to planning boards that are just starting out? What are appropriate first steps? What should we be thinking about?
Yeah. That type of thing. That's a great question. In terms of writing the bylaw itself and kind of getting a draft, I would very much In terms of writing the bylaw itself and kind of getting a draft, I would very much recommend starting with what the state's already written as a model OSRD bylaw. I think they do a great job, and what we've proposed in, when we review open space residential design bylaws, it's per the state's best practices. For the OSRDs, I think it's almost purely the state's best practices.
Do you have a list of towns the size of approximately of Dover, let's say under 10,000 people, that have had this bylaw? And list the projects, so that the planning board or planner can contact them about how successful or not?
So, we have a list of all the communities that have open space residential design as of 2014, which is one of our last edition of Losing Ground. That, the thing with OSRD is you don't have to report it to the, it's not like an open space plan where everyone knows what an open space plan is. So, it's simply by telling everybody and knowing.
Similar to...
So, we don't necessarily have a great updated list.
A good database.
Right. But I can certainly give you that list of communities that have it so far, and...
When we were considering it 10 years ago, I did get from UMass a list of, they had a list, they had someone doing a study of this, and I got a spreadsheet of about 300 bylaws, I think, not the bylaws, the list of 300 that had bylaws, and some of those were, like, some towns had multiple bylaws, options.
Yeah, nearly had like...
So, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't 300 towns, but, um, that's an old list now, it's over 10 years old, but at least it's a starting point.
Yeah, there are a lot of communities that have, and I will say that even if you had X amount of communities, I wouldn't necessarily recommend that you look at all of those communities.
Well, that's exactly where I'm going with my question. I think we made a mistake vis-a-vis some community center projects, we've had looking at towns that have densities, population that is three, four, five times the size of Dover. So, what I would suggest, I mean, these people understand that Lincoln, the Ohio State, Medfield, whatever, you're not going to be looking presumably at Lowell or Boston for your open space or cluster zone.
Right. I was going to say that Framingham is actually a strangely interesting example.
80,000 people, though.
They do, but they're really diverse, they have a, they have a very dense downtown, but then they also have a lot of farmland and rural character.
In the north part, near Sudbury, and that's because of Sudbury Valley trustees. They also have sewer, by and large, they also have water.
Well, I'm not saying to necessarily say that you're Framingham, or you should follow them, but they have a very good bylaw that they recently passed that we assisted with in the past couple of years on reducing clearing and grading and encouraging better site design. So, that might be...
But you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
No public water, no public sewer.
Yes, yep, yep.
Could we go back to 13 for a second?
Sure. And there's another question here.
Jack, I had a question, too.
I did. Can I ask you this question, sure you please? Gino, Sherbroe has had this similar bylaw for a number of years, two questions. How long have they had it? And how often has it been utilized by any of them?
It's had it for about 22 years, and it's been used zero times. Having said that, the only subdivision in those 22 years has been one four-lock subdivision. So, it's not like they're using conventional development subdivision.
The planning, the planning board currently, like most cities and towns, has two tools in the toolbox.
Yeah, right.
The approval now required it, and then the conventional subdivision. I think this would be a wonderful tool to add to the toolbox. I think the question then follows, we have responsible property owners, and we have irresponsible property owners. And to make this attractive to everyone, there's a lot of moving parts to this, and I support it 100%, don't misunderstand me. But the problem I foresee is someone going through the process, and they get to the step where the conventional has to be approved, and that's a submittal, probably preliminary subdivision plan, which is almost the equivalent, not definitive, and some property owner or developer's going to stop there and say, gee, they'll just start right here.
Yeah.
I've got this as a matter of right, unless there's more to it. So, I think, I think we have to play the devil's advocate through this in the weeks and months ahead, because there's a lot of moving parts, as I say, and...
It's a very, it's a very good point, and I do believe that you need to look at it from multiple perspectives. So, that's partially why I wanted to be able to include benefits to developers as well. We wanted to seem cost-effective to them, that their properties are going to sell quickly, and, um, and to offer bonuses and benefits, and also to offer this by right, not by special permit.
Can I just have a follow-up to this? And that is this, I'm with the Long Range Planning Committee, and one of the reasons we gravitated towards this was the consideration of the impact of the 40B around, and Sherbroe's got quite a threat going on, they have to deal with, and that has found its way to Dover a couple of times. Have you had the experience where a property owner with five, 10, 20 acres, who is considering a 40B, then learns about this and says, gee, that's very attractive, I think I'm going to forego this 40B developer from Boston, and I'm going to go with something like this? It could be subtly a vehicle towards dealing with 40Bs, and right now, in the game of 40Bs, the developers holding all the cards.
Yeah, wouldn't that be nice if I just had one of those in my back pocket? Like, here's your example of a town, just like Dover, that did this.
We had something to that, I agree with Jack. The big problem here is 40B projects, we've been, we've had very little impact so far. The last time we had one to really deal with, we spent $4 million for a hayfield to prevent it, and I'm not sure the town is set up to do that on a regular basis. So, my thoughts are, the first thing this board can do, and can do it all on their own, is get rid of that stupid no, uh, no cul-de-sac rule. That, every subdivision that the board has approved in the last 30 years has had a cul-de-sac. The idea that this has something to do with public safety is ridiculous. And you get rid of that rule, and you'll just make it easier for somebody to do something else.
Now, Charlie, I wrote that rule.
Was that before fire trucks had reverse? The other thing is, we're not getting into fancy bylaw. You could give the planning board authority to approve any kind of development of a property in accordance with the total acreage. In other words, if you have 20 acres, and it's in a one-acre zone, you can do 20 units, however the planning board chooses to approve it. And so, that way you can figure out how you want to do a particular conservation system, how you can handle wetlands, and how you can handle the exposure to the street. You think of the character of Dover, the character of Dover is pretty much established now, because you go along our streets, and it's pretty much developed. But to take one parcel and think, as an example, is something with a little imagination could be done. Milk Farm, if there's an iconic property that everyone sees in Dover, it's Milk Farm. If you let somebody develop the back of the property as condos, with the condition that they have to keep the farm as it is, as part of the condominium development, people would hardly realize there was any development there and would keep an attractive element of the town. That's just one possible example of what could be done if you gave the planning board complete flexibility. Now, you start putting in details of a plan, and then you get into the weeds, and then you get people starting to say, oh, well, I don't like that, or you don't like this. You just have a simple rule, let the planning board go ahead with it. I think that could work. As far as density and profit goes, you know, it's really about a five-to-one ratio for 40B developers. There's a big, there's a big pain in the neck...
What do you mean, 30 units per unit?
Yeah, there's a big pain, there's a big pain in the neck factor for doing that. And so, there's a lot of complications, and if they can do a significant number of units, still far less, and make all the money they can make out of it, that's the attraction, and it's superior to doing something as a 40B project. But if you make it too difficult, then come in, and 40B project is the way to go.
So, I appreciate your creativity, and I think that that's an important element to bring to the table for any of this. On the note of 40Bs as sort of a separate thought is, ZBAs usually believe that you cannot ask anything of a 40B, but you can only ask them what you would typically ask another developer. And so, if you have it in your regulations, this is not coming from me, this is coming from Mass Housing Partnership, because that's kind of their specialty. If you have it as part of your regulations that you do want low-impact development and preservation of natural features and significant wetland setbacks and things like that, if you have it written into your regulations where you would encourage it for any other developer, you can also hold that 40B developer accountable for those things. It's not an entire free pass, it's just reasonable combinations as to what another developer would be asking.
Just to Charlie, to your $4 million hayfield, the developer at the time, when Snyder Park had it came up for sale, told the Board of Selectmen that they wished he had...
Justine.
An OSRD-type bylaw, because they'd be much more interested in doing that than what they had proposed to Jim, which of course impacted what the sale price...
Yeah, one thing I guess is they looked at, as they looked at, they were told, well, you've got to put together a plan so there's two entrances and there's no cul-de-sac. They said, no, no, I don't think we could quite do that. And so, that's why we're named a 40B proposal instead of a subdivision.
Right. But so, but my point is that there are developers in and then that would have been interested in doing something in Dover, and we made it easier for them.
Yeah, you could have said, what's that, some one-acre or two-acre area?
On Springdale?
On Springdale.
Two, two, I think. What happened to the map?
That cul-de-sac restriction, that can be waived by the planning board in its discretion, given circumstances that genuinely warrant it, and that's up to the discretion of the planning board. So, over on Springdale, that could have been done if it found its way before you.
But it didn't get that far because somebody looked at it and said, oh, this is, these are the hoops they make us jump through, and, yeah, I guess we can start the process of jumping through hoops, but it's easier to just propose a 40B project.
Which, again, is why we encourage OSRD to be by right, to make it fewer.
So, we've talked about a lot of the upsides. Have you witnessed downsides, or people that have put this in place and then considered something for some reason to be a failure?
I would say the biggest failure of OSRD is why it doesn't get used. And communities say, you know, we have this in our toolbox, but I guess we're not encouraging it enough, we're talking about it, and part of that might be that, I don't know, that the town doesn't really know about or care, that they don't write it specifically that it's encouraged, that the planning board doesn't really think about it, that you just don't have subdivisions coming in. But no, I haven't heard any examples of, man, I really wish we didn't do that. Typically, we found that communities are surprised by, there's one Riverside, Riverside Walk, Concord River Walk in Concord? And they said, gee, you know, I moved here from Cambridge or whatever, and I knew like two of my neighbors in the 30 years I lived there, and I lived here for six months, and I know everyone in the neighborhood, you know? So, a lot of people have felt that it provides a real sense of community supporting character that they weren't even expecting or planning for, but it was really enjoyable.
I think to your point about why sometimes I wonder why it doesn't get used, I think the real issue, particularly with Dover, is if we're going to write this, we have to write it in a way that gets used. And I think unfortunately, that requires having that to be honest, because I think you have to, you either have to make it mandatory, or you have to incent the developers to use it. And particularly with Dover, where we have issues with a more split center, and if you're going to do a more cluster-type development, you're almost certainly going to have to have onsite services, which increases the cost of packing systems and all of that. That's going to become an issue for the developers, and obviously, the way we offset that's what the policy is. And the issue we ran into last time was that the, the community felt a little uncomfortable with the idea of the planning board having discretion to determine what that bonus was going to be. So, they might be up there with a certain block type of discretion, but project by project, they were going to decide you're getting an extra eight units, you're getting an extra 12 units, and I think that's sort of the political difficulty with this, is that to make it work, it needs something that some people are going to be tense and comfortable with, and so, if you guys are going to go for it, I think that's one of the things that you're going to have to grapple with, is trying to find that balance, because I think that's, you know, there's no point in going through the exercise that Sherbroe has, it's not worth the brain damage to write a bylaw that never gets used. And so, we've got, if you're going to do it, you're going to find something that works against people that you trust. The other, the other issue that came up that I recall was, the issue of tax revenue, and the idea that depending on how these laws lay out, demand of public tax revenue, because particularly with the Concom, or another town agency ends up holding the conservation interest of the land, it's not being taxed in the same way.
Right, but the goal is that you have at least the same number, potentially more lots, and that they have a higher value.
Right, but so, so, I, this issue came up last time, and I think, again, that's, that's an issue that needs, you guys need to be prepared to deal with, and I don't know if this information is available, people have run scenarios showing that tax revenues really don't take a hit.
So, that's part of what we're looking at in our next edition of Losing Ground again, but I don't necessarily have the laws that you took on that. I can, I can do some examples of other communities, follow up other sites.
I would say the difference is now we have two relatively new high-density developments in town, and we can look at the values and the tax revenues that they generate as examples of, you know, just to sort of provide some data behind that.
But those two developments, it's not set aside land...
Oh, I know. I'm just talking about, you know, size of a house, number of bedrooms, and the value.
A couple of points, almost in response to what you just said, are, someone raised the question of Sherbroe and 40B, and yes, there have been seven different developments proposed, they've all run into the difficulty that Sherbroe has absolutely no ability to supply water. Now, if you can build a house and not supply water, I'm sure you can go forward.
Well, that hasn't stopped in any of the 40Bs.
They found water, not the one that Higbee was proposing to the planning board.
Well, the developer is confident, he's done tests well, and he's confident he has a private water supply.
It'd be surprising.
Actually, I was just trying to get a sort of poll of the room, and, you know, we've talked about it in the past, was sort of think about the most houses that would normally go, cap it at that, and then look at rearranging them so you get the open space benefit. I just wonder how other people in town, on different boards, think the town residents would respond to a density bonus or other bonuses, or any of you people who've been thinking about this think of what, what incentives would be reasonable to a developer and palatable to, to the town as we kind of grapple with this Rubik's Cube of opportunity?
Are there formulas, density bonus formulas, that other communities adopt? I believe that there are, and do you...
Only there's density, there's affordability, maybe there's other, there's other things that people do, and then you get relief somewhere. I just, I don't know, many of you, when thinking about it, you know, think a density bonus would fly, or would find that offensive, or there's some other magic incentive that could be...
Bonus being a two or three extra lots for...
Yeah, like, but they were, you know, you're talking about, you know, are they going to recover those costs? Maybe you recover it because you have two extras residents.
I think that's a bonus in and of itself.
Ham, it felt like your concern or point from the last time around was the discretionary nature of the density bonus. So, if you could come up with a formula that would alleviate the discretionary nature, then maybe you wouldn't have such political concern.
Well, the simplest one would be to just say, if you've got 10 acres in a one-acre zone, you could put in 10 units, and...
But that's no, but that's no density bonus, you're getting the same...
That is a density bonus, because right now, you can't do that. You could get maybe eight units in.
Oh, because of the road, okay, you're right.
So, if you say, no, no, we'll let you do 10, you get 10 acres, you can do 10 units. Now, discuss with us how you want to do it, where you want to put it, but it's going to be visible from the main street, what isn't, and then you can go on from there.
Okay.
But that has the advantage in a public forum, with saying, well, we're not changing our zoning, it's still one-acre zoning.
Right.
We're maintaining the principle of one-acre zoning for a particular area.
And how would you manage that, Charlie, if you think that through, but someone has a 10-acre parcel and half of it is wet? So, it's a 10-acre parcel, but realistically, it's only going to be bylaws, and maybe, maybe you only could have put four based on road restrictions, but that's where I think it gets a little sketchy.
The problem, I've thought about that, the problem is that if you say you can't include the wetlands, then you're going to get opposition from everybody who has a damn spot on the land.
Right.
And include the wetlands, that's going to be the open area, that's going to be the open area. And you'll just have to, you have other constraints on using the wetlands, you may have to have even greater density and do other, do other things. You have to have this flexibility to make it really work, and to have a viable alternative for 40B projects, because that's, that's what we're facing.
Yeah, I hear you. I would struggle with that math on the bylaw, but I do think also having a developer get some guidance in advance, is they look at a map, you know, sort of get some feel for what they could do before they...
I mean, this discussion is all about environmental issues, but the real issue is, is the legal issues here because of 40B projects. That's what the real issue is.
I think Hamilton's point is very well taken, and I think this bylaw, as we have it now, could be important...
it now, could be improved significantly by some type of cap put on that density bonus. And it wouldn't take a whole lot, I would think, to come up with a simple rational formula that, given this, you get a 10% bonus or whatever it might be. I'll leave that up to Gino to figure out.
So we do recommend an automatic or formulaic bonus as the way to go. Off the top of my head, I can't remember what that exactly is, but I can certainly provide you examples.
The other thing I think about is running two calculations based on including the wetlands as a whole, because that issue is going to vary a lot, parcel to parcel, trying to process it.
So we recommend, you can write your regulations how you write them, but we recommend that any traditionally undevelopable space does not count towards your open space of 50% or 70%, whatever it is that you come up with. And I will say too, that communities have open space residential design and they only set aside 30%. We don't recommend that, we recommend over 50, but again, you can write it how you want.
That's different, sorry, that's different, not counting it towards your open space is different than not counting it towards the number of lots you would develop.
So typically you would use, when you were looking at the lots, you would use just the developable land and figure out, if open space residential design didn't exist, how much would be put on here, and then you would get that density bonus.
But that's not really true, at least not in Dover. I know some towns do exclude, totally exclude wetlands, but wetlands can be part of your two acres on a conventional lot. So, you know, we need to be careful on totally excluding it. And on the open space side, what a lot of towns do is, and I kind of like this, is the open space can have no greater percentage of wetlands than the parcel as a whole. So you can include some wetlands in it, but it can't be all the one, you know, just one.
Yeah, or, yeah, there are a lot of different ways you can do it, just to say, well, 10% of it, or, yeah. Give a push to back.
I have a question. When you get down to the actual article, it's going to go to town meeting, just we're headed that way. I'd be interested to know in the past ten years, like 2008, the article showed 3,388 acres and 274 acres on 45 Streets. How much have we lost or gained since then? I mean, has there been, what's the difference 10 years hence? That's one thing that should, we should have some facts. Second of all, I noticed that why open space subdivisions make sense, and this is the article 10, 10 years ago. There's two ways to preserve existing open space. Encourage large lot owners to donate land or put on permanent conservation restrictions, number one. Number two, create a zoning option for open space preservation subdivision, which we've been talking about. I certainly think we ought to encourage large lot owners to donate land or put on permanent conservation restrictions. I don't think you're going to find that there's 274 parcels of property on 45 Streets anymore. I'd be very interested to see what that is, and then make a little push for the conservation restrictions. I mean, it's quite a process to do that. I'm in the midst of doing it myself, taking forever. But, oh, it just takes forever to get sort of made, but with a little push, I think you could get more interest.
Yeah, well, I think in this discussion, as it goes forward, we would need to be very specific again. I know last time we worked with the assessors office to get data on all the parcels, and then we did a GIS overlay to see which ones had conservation restrictions, and that's where those numbers came from. Now our ability to access that data is much better than it was even 10 years ago, so we would certainly do the same kind of calculation, just to know what we're talking about.
Thank you. The question I've seen is to pass it has to be a town meeting. And one of the problems with our former government is the quality of presentation at town meeting has to really be compelling. Because there are a lot of us who are very well educated, I hear both sides, and depending on how well it's presented, I could go either way. And even though governments like to trust your judgment, it's amazing what can happen at a town meeting, things made no sense get passed. And so I think if the planning board comes up with a good plan, you have to have such a polished presentation. And sometimes you get developers support you, people hear, well, that developer's for this, this must be bad. And that's one of, to me, the biggest obstacles you're going to have.
I think one of the things to keep in mind, that we're talking here now, your questions are coming to us as planning board, that in the past it was the planning board that tried three times to do this. I think our approach this time is a little bit different, which is why we asked for this meeting, appreciated so many people coming from different committees and so forth. Because this is really a town-wide issue, it's not just a planning board issue. And to your point about trying to get things through town meeting on complicated issues where there's really little interest in education prior to getting to town meeting, it becomes very hard to, in ten minutes, convey a complicated issue. It helps when the issue being given to the citizens at a town meeting are coming from the Board of Selectment and open space and Concom and Board of Health and the planning board and housing partnership and whatever else. In other words, the planning board is the one that has responsibility for zoning regs and zoning bylaws. So yes, we might be the head sponsor, but it's not our bylaw. It's a good number of committees, towns have come together saying, this is for very, very many reasons, the best approach to take to address Dover's future.
Carol, if I can follow up on your point, speaking from my perspective only, that's true. And if my board were to be supporting it, it would be from the perspective of groundwater protection, access to water. The reason I came back to this slide, you see on the right-hand side, and it shows it terribly, I'll tell you that right up front, that's an attempt within a parking lot to set aside space for the ability to have surface water runoff and find permeable. I suggest two sources. One that I think you've not made use of in your discussions, Iran Badi, Ben Yitzhak at MIT, City Planning, has done a phenomenal amount of work, and publishing they also have, on land use, and with the specific issue of protecting groundwater. And I think his most famous book, you'll laugh at this, is Rethinking a Lot, The Design and Culture of Parking. And the point that he makes in that and several other documents is that, and it could be incremental on the part of the planning board to suggest or require, that we should be considering systems, we should be considering where appropriate permeable driveways, and I'm not suggesting, well, the one that always falls out is, the developer says, okay, I'll put down riprap, which makes it impossible to plow the driveway. But there's materials today that are plowable, will tolerate fairly decent loaves, and yet which are permeable. And he writes about that considerably. One other area that I'd suggest using as a resource is the Water Resource Commission, dear to my heart, has a number of toolkits that they've now made available, but of course, unfortunately, they have a webmaster who tends to step on his own feet and has once again precluded access to them. So I have to call Vandana tomorrow and say, hey, you can't get to them at the moment. But they have, in the Water Resource Commission...
This is the MWRA?
No, absolutely not. I'm sorry, just to suggest to you, you're taking the wrong direction. The MWRA is in the business of selling water.
So which, where is this?
This is the Massachusetts Water Resource Commission, headed up within EEA.
Carol, this is the organization of the Water Study Committee, is the one I work with.
I can give you all of the names of the players if you need it. But one of the areas that I, now that I see what's happened, I've got to call her up and say, hey, get your webmaster to give people like you access to the toolkits, because they're there for low-impact development.
So this one in particular is a picture of a sidewalk and to have green space incorporated, but it's the exact same feature of having...
Well, he starts out with the question of how come you can never find tree shade in a parking lot?
Yeah, so it's actually a great point that one of, again, one of the things that we often recommend in terms of, and I think I have recommended this in terms of your zoning and site monitoring and subdivision rules and rights, et cetera, we looked at all of those. We said, well, if you're going to require parking lots to have any kind of open space feature of landscaped islands, for instance, use those islands as banner retention areas, because then you're reducing the amount of store water and you're providing additional shade.
And his designs do not cut down on the number of spaces, which is amazing.
Right.
Because he's taken into account how people use parking lots.
Right.
But I get to another topic here in terms of, so many times I see lots being developed, and they don't have explicit wetlands. You can't find vegetated wetlands, you can't find a flora that would so define it. And yet you look at the topology and you know darn right well, in these ever-increasing heavy precipitation events, there's considerable water runoff. I'm looking at one right now, which was just cleared on Pinewood as an example. Many trees were taken down. And I would, again, these are all incremental steps you might be able to take before you get to or be working towards a bylaw.
Carol, I'm going to stop, because I know we have to go. I would just say that this plays exactly to my point before, when I asked Stephanie about how towns work to implement all this stuff we've heard, not just zoning bylaws and open space residential line, but low-impact aspects and so forth. We have a Board of Health, we have a Concom, we have a building inspector who could be saying, no, we need to do it this way, that has nothing to do with the planning board. And it's why we as a town have to decide whether we're going to be addressing these issues, are we going to, I'll use the umbrella term of green, despite the fact that some people will, you know, go crazy with it, but for the purpose of the discussion tonight, okay? There are lots of little, little things that could be done that don't require major zoning bylaw changes and town meeting stuff and everything else, but only if we as a town government, with all the different departments involved, look at this stuff, educate ourselves, and decide to strike down that road with the low-hanging fruit first and then building up. Right now, we're doing nothing. And we're starting tonight talking about the biggest thing, which is an OSRD, but in fact, there are probably lots of different things that all the little departments could be doing if they met together and got themselves educated.
And this, also, you make a really great point, it's a host of options. We're never saying that there's one thing is the end-all, be-all, it's, there are a million different things we could do, and it's exactly right to talk as a community and say, what's most important for us, what's feasible, what can we take on next? And to, you know, take steps, identify what those steps are to achieve those goals.
To Carol's point, as we say, that certainly in the past few months, I've been making this group, and I hope Sue will agree with me, and Laurie would agree with me, I've been making an attempt to break open doorways in the silos, albeit there is considerable objection to that from some individual upstairs. And I'm hoping that changes soon.
So I appreciate you all coming out tonight.
We appreciate your enthusiasm and your interest.
Thank you so much. I'm happy to follow up if there's, was a good question, if you remind me all the things that I said I might give to you.
Do you want lessons to the Water Resource Commission's toolkits?
Sure, sure. It might have been something that we've already considered, I don't remember. There were like six different best practice guides that we looked at to create ours, but we're always interested in...
If you, if you'll send me your email.
We have some other stuff that continues, so if you want to...
Yes.
No, 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 no.
If you'll send me your email, I'll get that to you.
And as you all can tell, this is just the start of a longer conversation.
I should have taken you out.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you like the new ride?
We just had minutes, yeah. Thanks again.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much, that was really informative.